I almost can't believe it, how far I've come compared to where I was the first day.
And now, as part of the LAPD family, these officers will protect and serve us all.
Want to buy some art? Well, LA is the place to be. Gil Reyes takes us to the city's biggest art show of the year.
The LA Convention Center, home to the E3 Gaming Expo, the LA Auto Show, and so many other events hosted the LA Art Show for its 24th year. Executive Director Cassandra Voyages told us why it's unlike any other art show on the planet.
The beauty of this show is that you can visit so many galleries in one space, and so many different types of artwork.
When the LA Art Show first got started, back in 1994, there were just 14 galleries and 250 attendees. Now it has grown to over 130 galleries and art institutions with tens of thousands of people attending.
Timothy Yarger, a Beverly Hills gallery owner, showed us this original David Hockney, valued at $350,000. And don't adjust your television sets. These are artist Mads Christiansen's lightworks, made with energy-efficient LEDs, a hot seller at $32,000 a pop.
Part of the reason that Mads Christiansen has touched collectors and buyers so deeply is that unlike a static work of art that's in your home, you might enjoy it, but these change constantly. So the emotional and visual experience has a lot of stamina. The other thing that's important, it's not on a loop. It never repeats itself.
Like cars? Well, they had cars too. An LAPD black and white, but actually just half of one. There was art from all over the world, and closer to home, from Art Share LA, based in downtown's arts district. The space nurtures up-and-coming artists.
We focus on giving artists access, and we really kind of want to stay ingrained in the downtown community, so we thought SC Marrow would be the perfect artist to bring here.
SC Marrow, a Skid Row artist, made this piece with $6,600 pennies.
A lot of my work is about the transmutation or transformation of materials, but the underlying message is about the transformation of the individual soul.
Which will no doubt be inspired at every colorful corner of the LA Art Show.
Folks at the LA Art Show say prices for individual works range between $6,000 to $1 million. I'll take two, please. And they were off. Hundreds of runners turned out for the half marathon and 5K run through iconic Griffith Park. Grab your running shoes and see if you can keep up with our own council member, David Ruh.
Set! Good morning. I am proud to be here on the world-famous, the largest urban park in the nation, Griffith Park, to host the 5th Annual Griffith Park Run.
We're really happy to put on this event every year. The LA Parks Foundation raises money for our city parks, all 450 of Los Angeles's city parks.
You came here to Griffith Park today, had a great day?
I had a fantastic day for the 5K, and what a beautiful day with so many thousands of people running.
I think it's great. It gets people out to the different parks more involved.
I love it. I used to do the half marathon. A little bit tough with my legs because it's on the road, but the 5K is just enough.
Beautiful place, beautiful weather, and awesome people, so I'm really happy to take part here.
Over at Dodgers Stadium, Dodger Mania was at a fever pitch as fans donned their favorite blues for the 7th Annual Dodgers Fan Fest. Check it out. We're here at Dodgers Fan Fest! It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to lay down in the field that the Dodgers play on.
My committee will come to see my team in my committee.
As a superfan, I have fun with it. I've been doing this since 2012.
It's gonna be a great year for Dodgers.
It's awesome to see that as much as we give and we love the Dodgers, they give back. So I was standing over there, and Justin Turner came up, and he touched my hand, and I'm never washing his hand because Justin Turner touched it.
This next story can't get any cuter. A newborn at the LA Zoo is getting lots of attention, but he's growing fast, so you better hurry.
So we had our Pudu fawn born here at the Los Angeles Zoo. He's out on exhibit for everyone to see with his mom and dad. He is still pretty small, and he has the spots. And at about three months old, he's going to be full grown. This is the first time in a while we've had an exhibit of Pudu, so we're really excited for guests to be able to see them.
So when we announced on social media, it was just going to be, you know, here's a really cute baby animal that you can enjoy. Started to see responses on social media from people saying, oh, looks just like Hitchon. Oh, that's, that Pudu should be named Hitchon. And we were all like, what's that? Who is that? Started to look into it, and fans of the K-pop group N-City have already said that the singer Hitchon resembles a Pudu. So our baby Pudu is now named Hitchon, and you can visit him at the LA Zoo with his parents, Stefan Mario. And he'll be, he'll be full-size grown up pretty soon, so if you want to see him with his spots, looking like an adorable little fawn, you should come soon.
Good news when it comes to crime in our city. The mayor puts his presidential bid to rest, and a new program helps put more boots on the ground to keep neighborhoods safe. All this in City Beat.
The two things I love the most, my family and my city, are right here in LA. So I have decided not to throw my hat into the ring to run for president in 2020.
Ending months of speculation, LA Mayor Eric Garcetti has chosen not to seek the Democratic nomination for president, indicating he'll stay right here and continue to help LA's continuing advances in technology, economics, and humanitarian issues. To that, the mayor announced that major crime in Los Angeles has dropped significantly since last year. These decreases directly correlate to the mayor's initiative in getting more officers out from behind desks and back on the street. Councilwoman Nuri Martinez announced a new volunteer community patrol program at LAPD Mission Division. The program is designed to support ongoing LAPD efforts in the Valley.
I'm gonna ride along with one of the teams that we're gonna go look for stolen vehicles. These community members are all volunteers, leaders in their neighborhoods, so they know every square inch of these neighborhoods in this community, and they're the extra eyes and ears for the police department.
From one-of-a-kind jewelry, paintings, and arts and crafts, the East L.A. Art Walk highlights the work of local talent and delivers quite a block party.
East L.A. Art Walk, it's a community organized event. It's been happening for five years at the corner of First Street and Indiana, and it happens on the second Sunday of each month. Rain, shine, or lightning. When we came up with the idea of the Art Walk, we wanted for something to be educational and beautifying for the community, at the same time that it brought additional foot traffic for the local businesses.
We bring a vibe to the community every second Sunday, and I know it's appreciated because we always have a dance floor in front of my booth. We try to bring a diverse, a diverse pool of entertainment.
We have local vendors, local designers. We have painters, local crafters that live within two-mile radius, East L.A. Heights Commerce Area, who come and partake of the event. The local community gets to appreciate the art.
We do a silk screening workshop as well with both the artist studios. It allows the community to come and actually learn how to print, as well as create their own stencils, so they can make their own art, and kind of hopefully spark the next generation to be young artists and entrepreneurs as well.
It's free for the public, it's family-friendly, pet-friendly, LGBTQIA-friendly. We are making sure that we are catering to all of these subcultures within our community.
We're trying to create a thriving economy for artists and entrepreneurs to exist. We're trying to create more business and more wealth in our communities of color. Everybody should at least experience it one time and find out for themselves how awesome it is.
But if unique food is more your thing, check out Smorgasburg, LA. It's got everything you can think of, from lobster, whole-fried fish, Cuban sandwiches, and ice cream. All of my favorites. It's LA's top destination for every taste. Hope you're hungry.
Zach Brooks, I'm the general manager of Smorgasburg, LA. S-M-O. S-M-O. S-M-O.
Well, the event is based on like food. They have all different types of vendors, people who have different little shops, so definitely something that's fun to come to on Sundays.
So Smorgasburg's actually a New York company. It started in New York, where we run a bunch of different markets. It opened in LA two and a half years ago, but it's not a New York market plopped out in LA. It's actually a LA market. All the vendors are from here in LA.
Well, honestly, this is the first time here. We're driving all the way from Riverside. Everything looks very nice.
There's a lot of variety and diversity around. There's a lot of different foods you could try out. Definitely a lot of delicious food.
Well, I mean, this is some of the best food in Los Angeles. I have my friends here with me from out of town. They're from West Virginia, and I just wanted them to have a very good experience.
There's pretty much something for everybody here. You can find every kind of food imaginable. We have some of the best Mexican food in LA.
From seafood to vegan to Cuban, Puerto Rican.
They have food vendors, they have ice cream vendors, they have beer vendors.
We have Middle Eastern food, Asian food, barbecue.
We wanna try the lobster down there.
You're 100% free to get in every single Sunday from 10 to 4, and we have a huge parking lot that is free for two hours.
Don't eat breakfast. Don't eat breakfast before you come here.
Smorgasburg, LA, happens every Sunday, so grab your bib and stretchy pants and visit la smorgasburg.com. A new music series is about to take center stage. Help connect those experiencing homelessness with service providers, and celebrate Black History Month during a Pan-African Film and Art Festival. All this and things to do.
Explore music, ideas, and the spoken word through Compose LA, an ambitious music presentation and companion lecture series happening in storied music venues throughout Los Angeles. In this inaugural workshop, Clockshop LA will host a symposium entitled Nicole Mitchell's Spiderweb. Don't miss Compose LA, beginning Saturday, February 9th at 7:30 PM. Clockshop LA is located at 2806 Clearwater Street. For more information, visit clockshop.org. The Los Feliz Connect Day event is looking for a few good volunteers. The goal is to connect people experiencing homelessness with employment counselors, health professionals, and other service providers. Lend your helping hand to the Los Feliz Connect Day, happening Saturday, February 12th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the Friendship Auditorium. To volunteer for the event, email cd4.issues@lacity.org. Head on down to the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Plaza for the 27th Annual Pan-African Film and Arts Festival. The festival features over 170 new black films from around the world, and exhibits from over 100 fine artists and unique craftspeople. Treat yourself to the Pan-African Film and Arts Festival happening February 7th through the 18th at the Cinemark Ray 15 Theaters at Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Plaza. For details, visit paff.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Umeem Rashid. From all of us here at LA this week, thank you for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA this week.
Good morning, good morning. If everyone would please take their seats. If everyone would please take their seats. Shhh. Today is Wednesday, February 13th. Welcome to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10. The public is welcome. We have a quorum. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Bloomingville, Bonin, Buscagino, Sadio, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Coretts, Cricorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Ruh, Smith, Wesson. Thirteen members in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Continue.
Approval of the minutes.
O'Farrell moves, Bonin seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Weiser moves, Ruh seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, items 1 through 12 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Economic Development Committee reports for items 6 and 12 have been submitted, posted, and circulated.
All right, let's prepare to vote on those items. Open the roll. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to send item six forth with.
So ordered.
And then items 13 and 14 are items scheduled for closed session. Public hearings have been held for those items. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Why don't we, for a moment, let's do that? And that brings us...
Mr. President, that then takes us back to presentations or general public
So I want to quickly call up Dory Frank. Dory Frank, please come forward, followed by Mr. Previn.
I'm here representing Hatzalah, which is the emergency system both in Pico, Fairfax, and North Hollywood. Councilman Corretts, Krikorian, and Rue know about it. And there's been a big fight between the L.A. Fighters Union and Hatzalah regarding running ambulances in those three. I do know that Hatzalah arrives within two minutes of a person calling. I'm asking that Hatzalah should be brought on the agenda for the City Council to determine finally, after eighteen years, were not the City Council approve of Hatzalah having three ambulances in the area to help people save their lives? That's why I called about it. And Paul knows about this, Mr. Rue knows about this, and Mr. Krikorian knows about it. So I'd like this put on the agenda, so Hatzalah can come into the City Council, have the Firemen Union come in and explain why they're not allowed to run ambulances. Yes, time is of the essence, and that's why I'm here to talk about it. I would like today that you somehow put it on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Previn? Mr. Previn?
Yes.
No, Mr. Previn, not you, Mr. Previn.
Yes, sir. Do, did you call my items?
No, you only have a general public comment. Give him his one minute. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Can you give me back? Oh, thank you. Okay. Yeah, well, I guess so none of the items are available for speaking, because there's some really interesting stuff down in the port, the airport, all these kind of interesting new jobs for the controller. I don't know. I feel like we should be able to speak on those since they're on the legislative body's agenda, and we shouldn't. Why, because you were hurting committee? Yeah, they weren't. And by the way, there's no agendas in the room, once again, civil rights leaders. Mr. Harris didn't see you yesterday with the thousands of people roaring against the big incarcerator for the mentally, you know, mental health people. So what we would like to do is get public meeting agendas right here in the room. I think you were here the other day when Sean Murphy, one of our constituents, came down and could not find a public meeting agenda. He was directed, he got upset with the clerk. It's not cool, sir. I know you're a civil rights leader and a hero to many people, but you have to provide. I think even Krikorian, who's not here today, and Rue would agree. And I just want to make one comment. Monica Rodriguez is holding a 3:00 P.M. public safety meeting with about thirty-five items, all of which include, you know, 2.5 million...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you, sir. And agendas can be picked up at the clerk's office, and we have an electronic agenda just for those that are watching in the back of the room. All right, that closes general public comment. Madam Clerk and Madam City Attorney for the day, I'd now like to recognize Mr. Blumenfield. Are you ready for your presentation?
Everybody up here. Mr. President, colleagues, today we are here to recognize and bring awareness to social media safety. Social media can be used to build communities, spread information across the world, help advance missions of non-governmental organizations, give historical disadvantages communities an accessibility platform. We know all of the wonderful benefits of social media. However, the ubiquity of social media access also changes how bad actors and criminals can prey on society, notably foster youth, domestic violence survivors, marginalized communities. We've seen a lot of dangers with social media as well. Late last year, one of my team members, Cameron, who's over there, attended the annual Peace and Kindness Walk in the western San Fernando Valley. The walk is one of the many actions our community has taken to rally together and to stand up and spread the message of anti-bullying and kindness. The walk also recognizes how one local high school teenager went to El Camino, goes to El Camino, Jordan Peisner, was viciously attacked by two teenagers for the sake of internet fame and safety. Jordan, which is, he's right back here, he was cold-cocked, knocked out, all because somebody wanted to show it on video. It took him years, but he is now skateboarding again. He's a good kid, and he is a testament into turning adversity into advocacy. Now, we need to take innovation actions on our part as a city, and we need to do things to recognize social media safety. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't realize about cybercrimes that are out there and about some of the dangers with social media. Cybercriminals are targeting everyone from youth to seniors. So the first step that we can do is bring awareness to the problem. I'm glad that by declaring today, which is what we're going to do, Social Media Safety Day, millions will become aware and empowered to protect themselves, their loved ones, and the community. And I'm glad to be joined by the Organization for Social Media Safety. This is a group that's based in the west San Fernando Valley. It is the nation's first nonprofit that serves as a consumer protection organization focused solely on social media safety. Through innovative educational programs, legislative advocacy, technology development, they are right by our side in contending, which is still the wild digital West that we have. So our first guest speaker I want to introduce is Mark Bergman. He's the executive director for the Organization for Social Media. He has a long history advocating for marginalized groups at the national and state level, and he was instrumental in creating Jordan's Law, which was named after Jordan, who I referred to earlier. That law is a state law. It's the first in California to contend with media-inspired violence. So, Mark? Give me the floor.
Thank you very much. As the councilman said, my name is Mark Bergman. I am the executive director of the Organization for Social Media Safety. I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge some of our supporters and board members who are here with us today, and especially thank the City Council and Councilmember Blumenfield for recognizing us and for focusing attention on the dire need to finally make social media safe. Unfortunately, the Organization for Social Media Safety arose under tragic circumstances. Around two years ago, as the council member said, then fourteen-year-old Jordan Peisner, who again is here with us today, was standing with friends outside a local fast-food restaurant when another teen that he did not know suddenly and viciously attacked him. While Jordan was being attacked, and then while he lay helpless on the ground, witnesses and friends of the perpetrator just stood there, took video, and uploaded it to social media, where it quickly and sadly went viral, having now been viewed by hundreds of thousands. Fortunately for us, soon thereafter, Jordan and his father, Ed, resolved to ensure that no other family had to endure such a horrific ordeal. That is when I met Ed and Jordan, heard their story, and decided to help. Working together, we developed and then passed the nation's first state law, called Jordan's Law, to deter social media-motivated violence, or violence committed for the purpose of filming and distributing on social media just to gain internet notoriety. While we were advocating for Jordan's Law, we became painfully aware of the rapidly growing list of social media-related threats and dangers, including cyberbullying, human trafficking, hate speech, and propaganda, to sadly name just a few. That is why we founded the Organization for Social Media Safety, the nation's first consumer-protection organization truly focused on social media, where we take comprehensive action to protect us all from these serious and even existential threats. We look forward to working with the Los Angeles City Council to make social media safe for everyone in Los Angeles and around the world. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mark. Our second final speaker is Beverly Entagu. Beverly is a member of the Student Advisory Council for the organization, as well as the student government president at California State University, Northridge, at CSUN. The student government represents approximately 35,000 students from around Los Angeles, from around the Los Angeles area, and of course, they advocate on their behalf, and she has a lot to say on this issue. So Beverly.
Welcome.
Thank you. In this day and age, many of us use technology as a medium for communicating with one another. Whether that be through email, video conferencing, or social media, the value of face-to-face interaction has lessened. As a user myself, social media is a platform that allows you to not only elevate yourself, but to also network with people that you otherwise may not have without the platform. I joined the Organization for Social Media Safety's College Advisory Council not to tell you all to delete your social media accounts, but rather, I'm here to inform you of the importance of being aware of who you are communicating with and who you're sharing information with. It is imperative that we all educate ourselves on the parameters of our media accounts. Whether that be through our account preferences or privacy settings, it is important to know where your information is going and whom it is reaching. You may be reaching the company of your dreams, but she may be reaching somebody with ill intent. Art historian Michael Kitson once stated, "Awareness is a key ingredient in success. If you have it, teach it; if you lack it, seek it." As the Associated Students President at Cal State University, Northridge, I encourage you all to prosper on your various platforms, whether that be through Instagram or LinkedIn, but make an effort to be cognizant of what you're saying online and who you're saying it to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. And to help us usher in Social Media Safety Day, I'm introducing two motions today that are inspired by this day that contend with media violence, I'm sorry, media violence and cybercrimes. The first motion will help advance the efforts to expand cyber literacy to millions by funding a successful pilot program instituted by LAPD's Cyber Crimes Unit. Been working with them, and they're really excited about doing this. The second motion will allow more people to make private online police reports. This will link the MyLA311 and the LAPD online reporting tool. It also will expand the number of crimes which can be reported online to include prominent cybercrimes and a tip line for cybercrime red flags. These two motions will serve as the backbone in the effort to empower every single community member to counter cybercrimes. Now, I'd like to present you all with a Social Media Safety Day certificate that's been signed by every member of the City Council here, because we're all excited to bring forward the very first and hopefully annual Social Media Safety Day. Let's give them all a big round of applause.
Hey, Mr. Blumenfield? Before you leave, and Betsy, maybe we can hold for a minute on the photo, I'd like to recognize Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to rise and thank you, Mr. Blumenfield, and the organizations and individuals that are represented with you today. This is one of those things that doesn't get nearly as much attention as it deserves. It can both be the, you can have a cybercrime that is isolated, but what social media can do with violence and crime is what it does with everything else. It can make it spread. So you will remember, three years ago in my district, we had an outbreak of homicides that was driven mostly by social media, and you joined with a number of us to ask the social media companies, "Hey, stop profiting from this. Stop profiting from pictures of people getting shot or fights in the street," and so on and so forth. So I wanted to make sure I stood up and on behalf of the folks of the eighth district and around the city, thank you for this presentation, and thank you all for your work.
Betsy, the floor is yours. Let's, City Attorney, I've been informed that item 14 we should be able to take up. Can you speak to that briefly? It's the closed-session item. I believe the hearing was already held. Madam Clerk, maybe you could speak to it?
Yes, Mr. President. On item 14, in the case entitled RJ, A Minor at All versus the City of Los Angeles at All, there is a recommendation to expend up to $500,000 in settlement.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
All right. That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
That takes council to item 13.
Sergeants, we're going to be going into closed session.
We're trying to make it one call to City Hall for everything, and so we've been in collaboration with our IT department and with the mayor's office, and just trying to get as much information as we can so that we can help people faster, better, more efficiently, and solve problems. Prior to this collaboration, we were answering all of our calls, and they were getting bogged down. So we just had to sort of figure out what we, you know, how could we do this? And we did a lot of scripting to help the 311 operators know how to answer so that we could divert just the emergency calls to the shelters, and that way we can handle
It's such an interesting global phenomenon, and oftentimes, the art world is kind of missing a fun, party vibe.
What I'm trying to do here is really trying to understand what's happening right now in Korea. Whenever I go back to Seoul, all I see is K-pop everywhere, really, and K-pop is rising as like a huge part of the modern culture of South Korea. And K-pop is rising as like a huge part of the modern culture of South Korea.
Well, today is a special art walk because it is twofold. It is one, the Quanta Days. Today is NEA, which means Purpose. It's also the Art Walk Sunday. This neighborhood, in particular, Limer Park, is like the Mecca of the African-American cultural center, where a lot of the shops are here, the vendors come here, the food that we like, and the drumming and the dancing.
The purpose of getting together is just focus clarity and getting, and community, family, fellowship with not only our culture, but with everybody's culture.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Three, two, one. Please join me in welcoming to our celebration today Kobe Bryant.
Congrats on welcoming 50 million visitors. This right here is a championship moment.
Los Angeles is a place that draws people to it. We're magnetic. Come to LA, try one of our famous tacos, grab a Dodger dog, experience the awe and the wonder standing beneath a space shuttle that's actually gone into the heavens and returned, before going over to see Griffith Observatory to watch the most beautiful sunset on the face of the earth as the city lights come up like a bed of jewels at night.
I don't know if you know, but Los Angeles is one of the most Instagrammable cities in the world. The hashtag #LosAngeles averages nearly 40,000 new photos each and every day.
We are known together as the place that is an epicenter of seismic risk. But we hope today, this is another big step forward to being the epicenter of seismic preparedness.
Understanding the Shake Alert system and how it could be useful for Angelenos, and then actually building the app with AT&amp;T and Colworks to be able to create something that anybody can download that will give them precious seconds of warning before the earthquake occurs. We were able to get it down to an average of 1.88 seconds of latency from the time we first understand that an earthquake is happening to the time it's delivered on somebody's cellphone.
When you receive an alert, it will look and sound like this.
It's not a matter of if it's going to happen, but when. And so, this app hopefully is going to put it in people's minds that we need to prepare. Now, we have a technology that can notify us when this earthquake is coming. What are the actions that I will take?
One thing I believe in is to keep our neighborhoods clean and looking better. Because when your neighborhoods look better and you walk down the sidewalk, and it's a more pleasant experience, there's actually a physiological and a spiritual component to that. We really need to care for our public rights of way because these are our collective cathedrals.
We're doing some really great things in the Echo Park community today. Next month, we're here in Echo Park. We're doing cleanups, we're picking up bulky items, we're painting up graffiti. And we're knocking on doors informing constituents of the resources from the city that are available to them free. And then I get to meet more people that I represent.
We don't have any help.
You do now. Come on, you do now.
Thank you.
I'd like to begin this eventful day by welcoming all of you to Branford. Today, we celebrate the grand opening of our new and innovative playground. This is where learning, imagination, and friendships will flourish.
This is the reopening of our playground area here at Branford Park. This has been almost five years in the making. This all came about because of neighbors across the street who said that this park needed a little bit more attention. If it wasn't for them and this amazing community all around this area, some of this would not be possible. So thanks to them and thanks to Reckon Parks for finding the money and making this a dream come true.
We're here at Dodgers' campus.
It's going to be a great year for Dodgers.
It's awesome to see that as much as we give and we love the Dodgers, they give back.
So I was standing over there, and Justin Turner came up, and I touched my hand. And I'm never washing this hand because Justin Turner touched it.
The three is the museum's Osho Gansu Program. It's celebrating the New Year, and this is the Year of the Board.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey, Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Read While You Wait is a community-based literacy program that provides access to quality children's books for customers who are waiting for service.
I like the fact that I can read when I'm waiting to get my haircut and that I'm not just sitting here bored.
It's really nice to read while I wait for my brother to finish his hair.
This program is an opportunity for children to get exposed to a whole new world through reading. It allows them to help reach their full potential, regardless of what aspect in life they want to go to. If it's engineering, a doctor's, lawyer, reading is the primary basis to whatever.
The library wants to create positive associations with reading. And this is a fun way for us to provide great access to books to them in a non-academic setting.
Good morning. I am proud to be here on the world-famous, the largest urban park in the nation, Griffith Park, to host the fifth annual Griffith Park Run.
Who came here to Griffith Park today had a great day.
I had a fantastic day for the 5K. And what a beautiful day with so many thousands of people running.
I think it's bigger this year, actually. More people. The weather is nicer, a little bit warmer than usual, so it's all good.
We have theater, dance, music, film festivals, all kinds of performance art. We have classes seven days a week and theater upstairs. This is a solar-powered space. We produce about a third of our power on the roof. And we buy only green power from DWP.
The Electoralize is a wonderful place. It's benefited so many young students. The vibe is good.
It's just overwhelming to see that all this history on the wall and to know that some of my peers are still here to celebrate this.
I think it's important to really recognize and to honor all of the people who started out in a period when there really wasn't much available in terms of film.
My family's here, my kids, my grandchildren. And for them to really see their grandmother, you know, and to see this happening just means the world to me.
The Information Technology Agency is here at this emergency exercise because there are two things happening in an emergency simulation today. One is there's a cyber attack, which means that people are attacking the systems that manage the city of Los Angeles. And number two is that there are simulated explosions happening across some of our transit systems. So information technology plays a key role in how people normally communicate during an emergency. So we are simulating that those systems are down today.
If we had a real disaster, the idea that you know your fellow responder is big because now you've had a chance to practice together, play together, and you'll work better together ultimately.
We have people that are ready and trained to act and keep people safe and keep them informed.
Can you tell me a part of African-American history that resonates with you?
Oh, wow. Dr. Vartnuttukin Jr. I mean, that speech, I have a dream. It's one of the moments, I think, you know, America had to take a moment and hear his words.
It was a time in which we began to define who we were and made more steps towards realizing the freedom that our forefathers had fought for.
I will be reciting the Black Statue of Liberty poem. I'm taking all of my people back home and breaking them mentally free. So no statue in the Big Apple can mess with me because I'm the walking, talking, breathing, surviving, beautiful, black Statue of Liberty.
Happy Chinese New Year. Gong Hui Fat Choy.
Today's a great day here in Chinatown. We're having the Chinese New Year, celebrating with this parade. Really welcoming all of the Angelinos to come out and celebrate part of our history, part of our culture.
Happy New Year. Gong Hui Fat Choy.
We're trying to make it one call to City Hall for everything. And so we've been in collaboration with our IT department and with the mayor's office and just trying to get as much information as we can so that we can help people faster, better, more efficiently, and solve problems. Prior to this collaboration, we were answering all of our calls and they were getting bogged down. So we just had to sort of figure out what will we, you know, how could we do this? And we did a lot of scripting to help the 3-1-1 operators know how to answer so that we could divert just the emergency calls to the shelter. And that way, we can handle the emergencies much quicker and much more efficiently.
It's such an interesting global phenomenon and oftentimes the art world is kind of missing a fun, party vibe.
What I'm trying to do here is really trying to understand what's happening right now in Korea. Whenever I go back to Seoul, all I see is K-pop everywhere, really. And K-pop is rising as like a huge part of the modern culture of South Korea.
Well, today is a special art walk because it is twofold. It is one of the Kwanzaa days. Today is Nia, which means purpose. It's also the Art Walk Sunday. This neighborhood, in particular, Lemur Park, is like the Mecca of the African-American cultural center where a lot of the shops are here, the vendors come here, the food that we like, and the drumming and the dancing.
The purpose of getting together is just focus clarity and community, family, fellowship with not only our culture, but with everybody's culture.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Three, two, one. Please join me in welcoming to our celebration today Kobe Bryant.
Congrats on welcoming 50 million visitors. This right here is a championship moment.
Los Angeles is a place that draws people to it. We're magnetic. Come to LA, try one of our famous tacos, grab a Dodger dog, experience the awe and the wonder, standing beneath a space shuttle that's actually gone into the heavens and returned, before going over to see Griffith Observatory to watch the most beautiful sunset on the face of the earth as the city lights come up like a bed of jewels at night. I don't know if you know, but Los Angeles is one of the most Instagrammable cities in the world. The hashtag #LosAngeles averages nearly 40,000 new photos each and every day. We are known together as the place that is an epicenter of seismic risk. But we hope today this is another big step forward to being the epicenter of seismic preparedness.
Understanding the Shake Alert system and how it could be useful for Angelinos and then actually building the app with AT&amp;T and Colwork to be able to create something that anybody can download that will give them precious seconds of warning before the earthquake occurs. We were able to get it down to an average of 1.88 seconds of latency from the time we first understand that an earthquake is happening to the time it's delivered on somebody's cellphone.
When you receive an alert, it will look and sound like this.
It's not a matter of if it's gonna happen, but when. And so this app hopefully is gonna put it in people's minds that we need to prepare. Now we have a technology that can notify us when this earthquake is coming, what are the actions that I will take.
One thing I believe in is to keep our neighborhoods clean and looking better because when your neighborhoods look better and you walk down the sidewalk and it's a more pleasant experience, there's actually a physiological and a spiritual component to that. We really need to care for our public rights of way because these are our collective cathedrals.
We're doing some really great things in the Echo Park community today. Next month, we're here in Echo Park. We're doing cleanups, we're picking up bulky items, we're painting up graffiti, and we're knocking on doors informing constituents of the resources from the city that are available to them free. And then I get to meet more people that I represent.
We don't have any help here.
You do now? Come on, you do now?
Thank you.
I'd like to begin this eventful day by welcoming all of you to Branford. Today, we celebrate the grand opening of our new and innovative playground. This is where learning, imagination, and friendships will flourish.
This is the reopening of our playground area here at Branford Park. This has been almost five years in the making. This all came about because of neighbors across the street who said that this park needed a little bit more attention. If it wasn't for them and this amazing community all around this area, some of this would not be possible. So thanks to them and thanks to Reckon Parks for finding their money and making this a dream come true.
We're here at Dodgers' Campus.
It's gonna be a great year for Dodgers.
It's awesome to see that as much as we give and we love the Dodgers, they give back.
So I was standing over there and Justin Turner came up and I touched my hand. And I'm never washing this hand because Justin Turner touched it.
Today is the museum's Osho Gatsu program. It's celebrating the new year and this is the Year of the Board.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
Read While You Wait is a community-based literacy program that provides access to quality children's books for customers who are waiting for service.
I like the fact that I can read when I'm waiting to get my haircut and that I'm not just sitting here bored.
It's really nice to read while I wait for my brother to finish his hair.
This program is an opportunity for children to get exposed to a whole new world through reading. It allows them to help reach their full potential, regardless of what aspect in life they want to go to. If it's engineering, a doctor's, lawyer, reading is the primary basis to whatever.
The library wants to create positive associations with reading. And this is a fun way for us to provide great access to books to them in a non-academic setting.
Good morning. I am proud to be here on the world-famous, the largest urban park in the nation, Griffith Park, to host the fifth annual Griffith Park Run.
Who came here to Griffith Park today? Have a great day!
I had a fantastic day for the 5K, and what a beautiful day with so many thousands of people running.
I think it's bigger this year, actually. More people. The weather is nice, a little bit warmer than usual, so it's all good.
We have theater, dance, music, film festivals, all kinds of performance art. We have classes seven days a week and theater upstairs. This is a solar-powered space. We produce about a third of our power on the roof, and we buy only green power from DWP.
The Electoralize is a wonderful place. It's benefited so many young students. The vibe is good.
It's just overwhelming to see that all this history on the wall and to know that some of my peers are still here to celebrate this.
I think it's important to really recognize and to honor all of the people who started out in a period when there really wasn't much available in terms of film.
My family's here, my kids, my grandchildren. And for them to really see their grandmother, you know, and to see this happening, this means the world to me.
The Information Technology Agency is here at this emergency exercise because there are two things happening in an emergency simulation today. One is there's a cyber attack, which means that people are attacking the systems that manage the city of Los Angeles. And number two is that there are simulated explosions happening across some of our transit systems. So information technology plays a key role in how people normally communicate during an emergency. So we are simulating that those systems are down today.
If we had a real disaster, the idea that you know your fellow responder is big because now you've had a chance to practice together, play together, and you'll work better together ultimately.
We have people that are ready and trained to act and keep people safe and keep them informed.
Can you tell me a part of African-American history that resonates with you?
Oh wow, Dr. Vartanu Tzukin Jr. I mean, that speech, "I Have a Dream", is one of the moments, I think, you know, America had to take a moment and hear his words.
It was a time in which we began to define who we were and made more steps towards realizing the freedom that our forefathers had fought for.
I will be reciting the Black Statue of Liberty poem. "I'm taking all of my people back home and breaking them mentally free, so no statue in the Big Apple can mess with me, 'cause I'm the walking, talking, breathing, surviving, beautiful black statue of liberty."
Happy Chinese New Year! Gong Hei Fat Choy!
Today's a great day here in Chinatown. We're having the Chinese New Year, celebrating with this parade, really welcoming all of the Angelenos to come out and celebrate part of our history, part of our culture.
Happy New Year! Gong Hei Fat Choy!
We're trying to make it one call to City Hall for everything. And so we've been in collaboration with our IT department and with the mayor's office and just trying to get as much information as we can so that we can help people faster, better, more efficiently, and solve problems. Prior to this collaboration, we were answering all of our calls, and they were getting bogged down. So we just had to sort of figure out, you know, how could we do this? And we did a lot of scripting to help the 3-1-1 operators know how to answer so that we could divert just the emergency calls to the shelters. And that way, we can handle the emergencies much quicker and much more efficiently.
It's such an interesting global phenomenon, and oftentimes, the art world is kind of missing a fun, party vibe.
What I'm trying to do here is really trying to understand what's happening right now in Korea. Whenever I go back to Seoul, all I see is K-pop everywhere, really. And K-pop is rising as like a huge part of the modern culture of South Korea.
Well, today is a special art walk because it is twofold. It is one, the Kwanzaa Days. Today is Nia, which means purpose. It's also the Art Walk Sunday. This neighborhood, in particular, Limerick Park, is like the Mecca of the African-American cultural center, where a lot of the shops are here, the vendors come here, the food that we like, and the drumming and the dancing.
The purpose of getting together is just focus clarity and community, family, fellowship, with not only our culture, but with everybody's culture.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides peace of mind...
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park...
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County...
Knowing when you need it most.
Three, two, one. Please join me in welcoming to our celebration today Kobe Bryant.
Congrats on welcoming 50 million visitors. This right here is a championship moment. Los Angeles is a place that draws people to it. We're magnetic. Come to LA. Try one of our famous tacos. Grab a Dodger dog. Experience the awe and the wonder standing beneath a space shuttle that's actually gone into the heavens and returned, before going over to see Griffith Observatory to watch the most beautiful sunset on the face of the earth as the city lights come up like a bed of jewels at night.
I don't know if you know, but Los Angeles is one of the most Instagrammable cities in the world. The hashtag #LosAngeles averages nearly 40,000 new photos each and every day.
We are known together as the place that is an epicenter of seismic risk. But we hope today this is another big step forward to being the epicenter of seismic preparedness.
Understanding the Shake Alert system and how it could be useful for Angelenos, and then actually building the app with AT&amp;T and Colwork to be able to create something that anybody can download that will give them precious seconds of warning before the earthquake occurs. We were able to get it down to an average of 1.88 seconds of latency from the time we first understand that an earthquake is happening to the time it's delivered on somebody's cellphone.
When you receive an alert, it will look and sound like this.
It's not a matter of if it's going to happen, but when. And so this app hopefully is going to put it in people's minds that we need to prepare. Now we have a technology that can notify us when this earthquake is coming. What are the actions that I will take?
One thing I believe in is to keep our neighborhoods clean and looking better. Because when your neighborhoods look better and you walk down the sidewalk, and it's a more pleasant experience, there's actually a physiological and a spiritual component to that. We really need to care for our public rights of way because these are our collective cathedrals.
We're doing some really great things in the Echo Park community today. Next month, we're here in Echo Park. We're doing cleanups, we're picking up bulky items, we're painting up graffiti. And we're knocking on doors informing constituents of the resources from the city that are available to them free. And then I get to meet more people that I represent.
We don't have any help here.
You do now? Come on, you do now.
Thank you!
I'd like to begin this eventful day by welcoming all of you to Branford. Today, we celebrate the grand opening of our new and innovative playground. This is where learning, imagination, and friendships will flourish.
This is the reopening of our playground area here at Branford Park. This has been almost five years in the making. This all came about because of neighbors across the street who said that this park needed a little bit more attention. If it wasn't for them and this amazing community all around this area, some of this would not be possible. So thanks to them and thanks to Wreckin' Parks for finding the money and making this a dream come true.
We're here at Dodgers' campus!
It's gonna be a great year for Dodgers.
It's awesome to see that as much as we give and we love the Dodgers, they give back.
So I was standing over there, and Justin Turner came up, and I touched my hand, and I'm never washing this hand because Justin Turner touched it.
Oh, it's been a... What's that, these are keys? Oh, it's...
Today is the museum's Osho Gansu program. It's celebrating the new year, and this is the Year of the Boar.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
Read While You Wait is a community-based literacy program that provides access to quality children's books for customers who are waiting for service.
I like the fact that I can read when I'm waiting to get my haircut, and that I'm not just sitting here bored.
It's really nice to read while I wait for my brother to finish his hair.
This program is an opportunity for children to get exposed to a whole new world through reading. It allows them to help reach their full potential regardless of what aspect in life they want to go to, whether it's engineering, a doctor's, lawyer. Reading is the primary basis to whatever.
The library wants to create positive associations with reading, and this is a fun way for us to provide great access to books to them in a non-academic setting.
Good morning. I am proud to be here on the world-famous, the largest urban park in the nation, Griffith Park, to host the fifth annual Griffith Park Run.
Who came here to Griffith Park today? Have a great day!
I had a fantastic day for the 5K, and what a beautiful day with so many thousands of people running. Everything's bigger this year, actually. More people, the weather is nice, a little bit warmer than usual, so it's all good.
We have theater, dance, music, film festivals, all kinds of performance art. We have classes seven days a week and theater upstairs. This is a solar-powered space. We produce about a third of our power on the roof, and we buy only green power from DWP.
The electrolyzer is a wonderful place. It's benefited so many young students. The vibe is good.
It's just overwhelming to see that all this history on the wall and to know that some of my peers are still here to celebrate this.
I think it's important to really recognize and to honor all of the people who started out in a period when there really wasn't much available in terms of film.
My family's here, my kids, my grandchildren, and for them to really see their grandmother, you know, and to see this happening, this means the world to me.
The Information Technology Agency is here at this emergency exercise because there are two things happening in an emergency simulation today. One is there's a cyber attack, which means that people are attacking the systems that manage the city of Los Angeles. And number two is that there are simulated explosions happening across some of our transit systems. So information technology plays a key role in how people normally communicate during emergency, so we are simulating that those systems are down today.
If we had a real disaster, the idea that you know your fellow responder is big, because now you've had a chance to practice together, play together, and you'll work better together ultimately.
We have people that are ready and trained to act and keep people safe and keep them informed.
Can you tell me a part of African-American history that resonates with you?
Oh, wow. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I mean, that speech, "I Have a Dream," is one of the moments I think, you know, America had to take a moment and hear his words.
There was a time in which we began to define who we were and made more steps towards realizing the freedom that our forefathers had fought for.
I will be reciting the Black Statue of Liberty poem. I'm taking all of my people back home and breaking them mentally free, so no statue in the Big Apple can mess with me, 'cause I'm the walking, talking, breathing, surviving, beautiful black Statue of Liberty.
Happy Chinese New Year!
Today's a great day here in Chinatown. We're having the Chinese New Year, celebrating with this parade, really welcoming all of the Angelinos to come out and celebrate part of our history, part of our culture. Happy New Year! Go Hip-Hop Town!
We're trying to make it one call to City Hall for everything, and so we've been in collaboration with our IP department and with the mayor's office and just trying to get as much information as we can so that we can help people faster, better, more efficiently, and solve problems. Prior to this collaboration, we were answering all of our calls, and they were getting bogged down, so we just had to sort of figure out what we, you know, how could we do this? And we did a lot of scripting to help the 3-1-1 operators know how to answer, so that we could divert just the emergency calls to the shelter, and that way we can handle the emergencies much quicker and much more efficiently.
It's such an interesting global phenomenon, and oftentimes the art world is kind of missing a fun, party vibe.
What I'm trying to do here is really trying to understand what's happening right now in Korea. Whenever I go back to Seoul, all I see is K-pop everywhere, really, and K-pop is rising as like a huge part of the modern culture of South Korea.
Well, today is a special art walk because it is twofold. It is one of the Kwanzaa days. Today is "Nia," which means "purpose." It's also the Art Walk Sunday. This neighborhood, in particular Lemur Park, is like the Mecca of the African-American cultural center, where a lot of the shops are here, the vendors come here, the food that we like, and the drumming and the dancing.
The purpose of getting together is just focus clarity and community, family, fellowship, with not only our culture, but with everybody's culture.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Please join me in welcoming to our celebration today Kobe Bryant.
Congrats on welcoming 50 million visitors. This right here is a championship moment.
Los Angeles is a place that draws people to it. We're magnetic. Come to LA. Try one of our famous tacos. Grab a Dodger Dog. Experience the awe and the wonder standing beneath a space shuttle that's actually gone into the heavens and returned before going over to see Griffith Observatory to watch the most beautiful sunset on the face of the earth as the city lights come up like a bed of jewels at night.
I don't know if you know, but Los Angeles is one of the most Instagrammable cities in the world. The hashtag #LosAngelesaverages nearly 40,000 new photos each and every day.
We are known together as the place that is an epicenter of seismic risk, but we hope today this is another big step forward to being the epicenter of seismic preparedness.
Understanding the Shake Alert system and how it could be useful for Angelinos, and then actually building the app with AT&amp;T and Colwork to be able to create something that anybody can download that will give them precious seconds of warning before the earthquake occurs. We were able to get it down to an average of 1.88 seconds of latency from the time we first understand that an earthquake is happening to the time it's delivered on somebody's cellphone.
When you receive an alert, it will look and sound like this.
It's not a matter of if it's going to happen, but when. And so this app hopefully is going to put it in people's minds that we need to prepare. Now we have a technology that can notify us when this earthquake is coming, what are the actions that I will take.
One thing I believe in is to keep our neighborhoods clean and looking better because when your neighborhoods look better and you walk down the sidewalk and it's a more pleasant experience, there's actually a physiological and a spiritual component to that. We really need to care for our public rights of way because these are our collective cathedrals.
We're doing some really great things in the Echo Park community today. Next month, we're in Echo Park. We're doing cleanups. We're picking up bulky items. We're painting up graffiti. And we're knocking on doors informing constituents of the resources from the city that are available to them free. And then I get to meet more people that I represent.
We don't have any help here.
You do now? Come on. You do now.
Thank you.
Okay, let us now call us into open session. What's before us now is item 13?
Yes, item 13. The recommendation is for council to approve a settlement with the Recycle LA Service Providers to resolve a contract dispute regarding the application of certain fees or charges for extra service. The settlement approval authorizes a contract amendment in substantial conformity with the settlement to be transmitted to the awarding authority for its consideration as well as to council for its approval.
Thank you. So with that, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
Fantastic. Next item?
Next item, item 7. 7A, an amending motion has been posted and circulated for council's consideration. The first vote.
Let us reconsider. Then item 7. Open the vote. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
With that, let's now, item number 7 is before us as amended. Let us now open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
And that takes council to motions that they have for posting and approval.
They are posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Marquise Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I want to, for the good of the record, just present a general public comment. In the last 72 hours, elected officials in our city and our state have done a lot to move the ball towards justice, and I just wanted to mark it for the record. This city council voted to call out those who decide to enter into friendships with the greatest purveyor of bad gun policy in the country. We decided that in Los Angeles, we can still dress nice without relying on fur and the wanting killing of animals. Our mayor and along with several of our colleagues decided to shut down a gas-powered plant on the coast. In the county, just up the hill, they decided against a new prison in Lancaster and to turn Men's Central Jail into what it should have been for many years, and that is a mental health treatment facility. And I just think that's a big deal in 72 hours, and it ought to be recognized here in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Thank you, Marquise. Any other announcements, colleagues? Seeing none? Adjourning motions? Mr. Weezer? Can I all rise for adjourning motions?
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I wish to adjourn in memory of Henry Ronquillo, the legendary former principal of Roosevelt High School and beloved member of the Rough Rider family. He transformed the lives of so many through his dedication as a teacher, principal, and deeply rooted community member. Henry Ronquillo was born on March 11, 1936, in El Paso, Texas, and was the youngest of six children to parents Manuel and Elisa Ronquillo. In 1942, the family moved to Los Angeles and lived in the newly opened Pico Gardens Housing Project in Boyle Heights, where Henry attended Second Street Elementary, Hollenback Middle School, and graduated from Roosevelt High School in 1954. After playing basketball for Roosevelt High School and East Los Angeles College, he was awarded a Full Athletic Basketball Scholarship by the University of Oregon, where he graduated from in 1959 with a Bachelor of Science. From there, he set off to what would become a lifeline of dedication to uplifting our youth, especially in the neighborhood that had shaped him so much, and that is Boyle Heights. He was hired as a teacher at Roosevelt High School and Stevenson Middle School, where he worked during the 1960s and 70s. He continued to be an inspiration to his students by obtaining a master's degree from Claremont Graduate University in 1975. He climbed the educational leadership ladder and served as an assistant principal at Garfield High School and principal at Adams Middle School before he becoming principal at his own mother, Roosevelt High School. Henry Ronquillo served with distinction as a principal of Roosevelt High School from 1983 to 2002 for a record 20 years that remains unmatched in the history of the school. Mr. Ronquillo also became a member of the founding group of alumni who created the Roosevelt Alumni Association. Ever the socially conscious principal, in a memorable occasion to honor those who served, in 1997, Principal Ronquillo presented honorary high school diplomas to more than 100 World War II veterans, many of them posthumously who left school before graduation because they were drafted or volunteered to join the service where they fought bravely and honorably for our country. In another memorable and emotional occasion, Mr. Ronquillo presented honorary high school diplomas to many Japanese-Americans who were forced to leave Roosevelt High School in Boyle Heights and sent to internment camps during World War II. It is important to note that under his tenure, about 80 teachers who were Roosevelt alumni were hired to serve and give back to the same community they had grown up in. He understood that Rough Rider pride is a unifying thread that weaves throughout the school and community, uniting past and present and making Roosevelt the unique place that it is. In 2002, Mr. Ronquillo retired after 43 years in the Los Angeles Unified School District, a career that spanned six decades. His dedication to the community was unwavering, and in post-retirement, he continued to serve as board member for the Roosevelt Alumni Foundation. This past year, the Associate Administrators of Los Angeles awarded a Roosevelt student with the first-ever Henry Ronquillo Honorary Scholarship at a ceremony where Mr. Ronquillo was recognized for his notable career. The Rough Rider family was deeply saddened by the passing of Mr. Ronquillo, but his legacy carried on through each and every one of the lives he touched. A huge supporter of the school's athletic programs, he was in many ways the greatest of Roosevelt's many boosters. For this and many more reasons, Mr. Ronquillo will be deeply missed. Services will be held for him on Thursday, February 21 at 11:00 a.m. in Whittier Area Community Church located at 8100 Kalima Road in Whittier. Our most sincere and deepest condolences to his family and friends. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Any others? I have one member's. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Gary Mattingly, appointed as a general manager of the Department of Fire and Police Pensions on June 6, 1982, until he retired on December 4, 2004. Even after retirement, he continued to serve as interim general manager until June 2005. Mr. Mattingly was one of the longest-serving general managers at the LA Fire and Police Pensions. He served for 37 years for the city. He was appointed, when he was appointed, the fund was valued at nearly $1.5 billion and grew to $12.3 billion when he left city service in 2005. After retirement, he went on to serve the Credit Union Board, the Los Angeles City Employees Retirement System Board. In addition to being committed to the welfare of the community, Mr. Mattingly enjoyed traveling and spending time with his family and friends. He raised three children with his wife Paula Petrona. Our hearts go out to the entire Mattingly family. May he rest in peace. Thank you. Any others? Seeing none? We are now adjourned. Go forth and serve the people of this great city. Thank you.